The meeting of the Pension Board, 20th October. A couple of quick reminders, this is being livestreamed, so be aware of that. Um, thank you Fred, starting the meeting there. And we'd like to welcome Ray Hotchkins, who is from the Standards Board.
Uh, yeah, Standards Committee.
Standards Committee, sorry Standards Board, different thing. Standards Committee, who is sitting observing processes today. Right, um, apologies.
So we have apologies from Helen Pennock and Alistair McIntosh, Chair.
Thank you. Um, declaration to interest, I was actually quite nice to actually see the bit regarding the people being members of the Pension Fund, being recognised that it is not a material interest. And as specifically mentioned, which is nice clarification, good clarification. Minutes of the meeting, item four, held on the 16th of July, these have been previously circulated. If you're happy, I will sign those as a true record when we next meet in February. Yep, no, okay, happy there, yep. Um, I have no items requiring urgent attention. So we will continue on to item six, review of attendance, that's Charlotte, I believe.
Yes, thank you Chair, this is the usual report that you'll be familiar with, recording attendance of the board at the main board meetings and training events. So this is your opportunity to let me know if I've got anything incorrect or if you've undertaken any additional training that I can update my training log. So over to the board to feedback any comments, thank you.
No, anyone got any questions? Could I ask a question, Charlotte, in relation to training? We have the normal training, two C training periods, which the County Council, we do jointly with the members. What is the provision for other training which we may see available from outside providers?
Um, well, there's obviously during the year, there are usually sort of conferences that are held to address things like in the LGPS. For example, at the end of January, I think the LGA put on a governance of conference. So if there's anything like that, that the board wishes to attend, as you know, it's a good way of increasing your knowledge as well, obviously let me know. We normally send the Chair of the Committee and the Chair of the Pension Board, I will check with you Andrew, whether you've done the fundamentals, the LGA fundamentals course.
Uh, several times.
Yeah, I thought you had, which is why I didn't nominate you when it recently came up. But, um, you know, and if there's any sort of webinars and things that you may attend, you know, say off your own back, you know, let me know because I can put all that sort of counts towards sort of your, you know, your training and keeping your knowledge up. So I can recall that as training as well.
Right, thank you for that clarification. Any other questions, Gareth?
Yes, I was just going to add to that from an admin perspective. My team also host a number of member training sessions as well. So again, likewise, if anybody wanted to attend any, please do let me know. And we have sort of general LGPS sessions that we deliver to sort of scheme members. And then we have kind of more tailored ones around certain subjects if there was a particular area that was tricky. So happy to include anybody if they want to do that moving forward.
Is it possible for us to circulate details of those?
I can do, yes, yes.
So if anybody wishes to pick in, they can, right, thank you. Okay, right. Um, item seven, employer monitoring, is that you Gareth? And Charlotte?
Uh, yeah, I'll start off looking at the contribution size and then I'll hand over to Gareth. So the contribution monitoring has been a little tricky over this first quarter of 25-26 as we're now on the new finance system, unit four. Along with this, we've been automating the allocation of monthly contributions. And so we're currently in the process of learning how best to get the information out of various systems in order to establish exactly when the employer paid their money across. We were hoping this would be a simple report out of unit four, but the transaction date is updated if there's been any subsequent journals or amendments. So this date is not always reliable. The data in the table for the board in the report is based on the pay data as advised, on the remittance advice that the employer completes each time. And we are working on a solution which will hopefully pick up the date from the bank statement and also reconcile against remittance advice against the allocation in unit four. So we are working on, you know, progressing this matter and trying to make it as automated as possible because, believe me, it's tedious doing it manually. So as I said, at the moment, it's based on the remittance advised data. I have been working in the last couple of weeks on literally trawling through the bank statement and I'm fairly confident that the dates on the remittance advice and the bank statement are sort of fairly in line. There may be a day or two out, but I don't believe there's been any material breaches and contributions not being paid or being majorly late.
Before we move on, any members got any questions for Charlotte in relation to that? No, not seeing any hands.
Dominic.
Oh, sorry Dominic.
Thank you. Yes, Charlotte, I remember we raised this a few times over the last couple of years actually. And we've got this in better shape because originally we didn't have as much information around, particularly around the dates. And now we've got really clear information around how many people are actually offending. And if you remember, we talked a few times about, do we have a serial offenders list? And we debated whether that was good or bad and had some negatives and some positives around it. But I am conscious, going back to my training, that as a board, we are responsible for taking the decision or not taking the decision to report those that don't meet the deadline. And I'm conscious, we report every meeting who hasn't met the deadline. But there isn't any substance around either why they don't meet the deadline or why we shouldn't be reporting them. And I get in the majority cases, we're not, they're one-off offenders, there's some, you know, one-off challenges with them. But I think as a board, it might be important from a governance point of view to say, this is the reason. So therefore, our recommendation wouldn't ordinarily be to report them.
Okay.
At the moment, we've just got a number, haven't we, we've got two. But as a board, I say, well, why did we not report those two?
Okay, and so in future, you like sort of more information regarding the ones that were late, why they were late and that sort of thing, yeah?
Yeah, it doesn't have to be war and peace. I just think that, you know, even a one-liner to say, look, this wouldn't meet our ordinarily benchmark for material circumstance to report, something like that. Because as a board, the governance is on us, whether or not the regulator would come to us and say, why didn't you report though? And I've got reports saying two were over, but I don't really know why we didn't report them.
Okay, okay, I will, um.
On the flip side of that, sorry, on the flip side of that, Charlotte, I know that if we were going to report, the recommendation would be in there. It's really, you know, about embraces, because I'm sure if there was a material reason to report, it would be there in red writing and in bright lights. But I think conversely, I think it's still important to say the reasons why we're not reporting.
Yeah, that's fine, I'll take that comment on board and I'll do that in future reports.
Thank you. Charlotte, so the next part, I think you're going to hand over to someone else for that, Charlotte?
Yes, over to Gareth.
Yes, yeah, yes, thank you. So just taking you further down through the report, this covers off largely employer performance around the metrics we've previously covered. There's one sort of slightly new paragraph in there which just says about the new email process for engaging employers to obtain returns, I know we spoke about it at the previous board, but we've just put reference in there. In this quarter, no fines or charges were made to any employers. Everybody returned what we asked for in this particular quarter. If I scroll down just through the appendix items, you'll see the numbers reflected there. The number of levers is the first, just over 2,100, and the breakdown of reasons for them. For this quarter, I have added in a bit of extra context, just some numbers behind those reasons. You know, pie chart is lovely, but just spreading it out in maybe a slightly more digestible format. I've done the same again for the time to notify. So again, an important metric for us is, well, yes, we know how many have left, but how long did it take to be told? And again, you'll see here a breakdown of that table below with the numbers there. The areas you'd probably focus on more often would be the, you know, anything really above 30 days would be important for us to review and we do. The next appendix down covers off starters. So again, this is a developing piece, something that was asked for a couple of months back, a couple of quarters back, shall I say. We've started to add in the starter volume, the flip side of the coin to the levers really. And that's just reflected as well. Nothing substantial, really a big jump in April, you'd expect that, it sends to be quite seasonal. And then the sort of the last bit on this for us would be the sort of breakdown of the reasons for leaving or the, I think, sort of real retirements, if you like, because obviously a lot of levers aren't retiring, they're just changing jobs. So this then reflects the number of actual retirements, be it death in service, ill health flexi or sort of normal or late retirements. And then the time it's taken for us to be made aware. Again, all broadly where we'd expect it to be. Some of the highest times can skew it slightly, I wouldn't worry too much about that. That can purely be, in the case of ill health, for example, that can be because of the ongoing diagnosis or occupational health and things like that, it just takes a while to work its way through. But otherwise, the numbers are where we'd expect them to be.
Has anyone got any questions for Gareth? Flip through my screens. I have a question Gareth, opting out. We have quite a large number, significant number, opting out of the LGPS. Is there any way of breaking that down into further?
Not easily at this point in time. Because historically, there was no requirement to go on the reason why somebody didn't come in. So it's quite hard, other than just saying, here's a number that elected to leave effectively. But obviously, under the various consultations that are ongoing at the moment, one of them is around data capture of opt-outs. So I think we're going to wait and see what comes of that ultimately. Absolutely an area that I would like to target. I think there's a lot of focus on the gender pension gap, but there is a generational pension gap as well within the UK that I think the opt-out data would support once we have it. And so when we get that guidance, yes, we'll be able to build out reports on the sort of reasons behind it. I think having a number is interesting, but really the question is why they're doing it. So yes, I guess one for the future, as soon as that guidance is provided and we can start to build some reports around it, you'll see it in here.
Okay, following on slightly from that, have you got a statistic as to the number? Because I'm aware that when the scheme was introduced fairly recently, they introduced the 50-50 option.
Yes.
Which was aimed in particular at the lower-paid employees. Is there, of how many people are actually falling into the categories? Those A, how many people are on the 50-50? And B, the, um, I suppose, because there's the salary levels of those people.
That should be achievable, yes, I know the uptake is very small. But I can get the numbers for the next report or I can try and get them out ahead of time. And if that's something that we want to include moving forward, happy to add that as a trackable.
It's just something, we've sort of, talking to former colleagues and existing colleagues, the opt-out is, oh, I can't afford it.
Yes.
That's the way I would ask the question, as to why people opting out.
Yes, and the challenge around opt-out, I've challenged everything with LGPS, but opt-outs in particular is we have to be very careful not to advise from an administrative perspective. So what happens, just for awareness, is when a member inquires about opting out, there, we have a section on our website that is, I wouldn't call it hidden, it's there, you can find it, but it isn't, you know, on the front page. We direct members to that, but before you get into anything opt-out, it talks all about the 50-50 and the benefits of the scheme and all those sorts of things. Obviously, fine line treading without being advisory, but it tells them, do you know you're going to give this up, in essence? And then only once they've come read through all of that, can they then get to the opt-out form, which they have to complete in return. So we've, maybe there's room for improvement, but we try as hard as we can to express the value of the benefits before they get to any forms, because it is a highly important level of pension benefit this. But I think the data should be obtainable. Let me go away and speak to our systems team and see what level of data we've got to date. But I think it'll be a developing one certainly, as we go over the next probably six months or so, once that guidance comes out.
Right, thank you, thank you very much for the clarification. Okay, Dominic?
Just very quickly, just to hijack your point there Andrew, and I've never thought about this before, particularly about opt-out. It'd be really interesting to see if the opt-out is admitted body heavy or if it's a general mix across admitted body and government function. My gut instinct coming from an admitted body is admitted bodies don't, they're not as good at promoting the scheme as perhaps your local authorities. So it'd be interesting to see if those numbers do bear that out and what we might be able to do to help that with, particularly with admitted bodies.
Yeah, it's a very fair point, I think. And something we're doing, it's not necessarily in the report, but just to contextualise what we're doing in the background. I'm redesigning with my team our sort of ongoing communications and training schedule with employers and members. And a big focus of that, excuse me, a big focus of that will be on capturing new people before they opt out. So we're looking at how we can do that and introducing some, I say mandatory training, but training that is going to be in place and available videos etcetera that we can use to try and emphasise the real strength of benefits the LGPS provides, without being advisory, of course. So yeah, that again will come and I suspect you'll start seeing some of that in the new year. We've just had to move a few parts around internally to get the kind of resource available to throw at it because I'm very passionate about it. And then again, it will be a case of sharing that in here if it's of interest. But around the sort of communications and training plan we have, which again will hopefully try and encourage people to stay members rather than opting out in the first case.
Yeah, it's a great point Gareth, and I think sometimes the education needs to be at employer level, particularly for admitted bodies rather than employee level. I think, you know, coming from admitted bodies, I just see it every day where the pension is a pension, where it become a particular issue for us as an admitted body, is we've got an aging workforce and our new generation of workforce were tending to opt out. And of course, that was affecting our contributions when contributions are set because we're being penalised for having an aging workforce. So as an employer, once we knew that, we were like, you know, carrot and stick. That was the stick for us to go, actually, look, we really need to promote the advantages of joining, ensuring you stay in the scheme and don't opt out. So definitely, I think that communication is a big piece, but not just employee, employer.
Yeah, completely agree, it starts very much with the employer. So yes, we have the training plan in place, we're working out how we can create a number of bite-sized videos. And I mentioned the word mandatory, but think, you know, the sort of mandatory training you have through employers, you know, your health and safety and that kind of stuff. But it's following the same sort of vein as that really, we're exploring the options for that right now. And then they'll be looking to create things like quizzes off the back of it and things like that that we can use to start driving engagement. But it does very much agree with you, it starts with the employer and making sure they're aware of the implications. And then a slightly different set of training for the employee, because the implications are obviously different, but still just as important.
Thank you, thank you for that, it looks an increasingly interesting area of work for you there Gareth. Okay, no other questions for anyone? No, in that case, we'll move on to the risk register, Charlotte.
Okay, thank you. So there was only one amendment to the risk register, which was B4. So apologies, I think the report says B3, so it's B4 regarding the pooling arrangements. And that's been updated since it's been established that all the Brunel funds are not going in the same direction as, you know, we had hoped. Obviously, we continue to strive to keep any transition cost down to a minimum. I have been working with our colleagues in internal audit about how we present the risk register to the board. And they've come up with two or three examples which are attached. So I would ask really whether, how the board, how they would like the risk register to be presented in the future. Would you like it to continue as I currently do it? Or do you prefer one of the suggested attachments really? So I would go back to the board for your thoughts.
Has anyone got any viewpoint views on the various presentations which are in the pack? Dominic?
Yes, Charlotte, I think the risk register that you produce is a great tool for us at board where we can see quite clearly, quite quickly. We're always informed of changes and indeed we have conversations beyond the meeting around, you know, what we can have some quacks and some slight changes to what's in there. But really, for me, it's like a blueprint and it's easy to read that blueprint and it's easy to then challenge you or others to say, look, what is happening here? I wouldn't, and I saw the examples, I'm not saying they were dum-dang because there was some other elements which probably were quite useful. But for me to have that detail is really important. And I think it's really important as well, you know, I used to think I was a newbie, but I think I'm approaching year four now. But it's a really, when you first look at the risk register, it's like, oh God, you know. But then as you does more and more boards, and I'm conscious we've got a few new board members, it's a very, very good tool to highlight what the risks are that we face, what the risks are that the pension face and what we as a board are responsible for. So I would be more than happy for it to carry on on the basis that it's already been undertaken.
Yeah, I totally agree and I think that level of detail is necessary and helpful. So yeah, I agree with everything you say. Got to click the mouse, Ian?
Hello, perhaps I can just support what Dominic says. My view is it provides us with a degree of continuity. We don't want to change because we would then be having to try and go back to look at the old one. I think if we stay with what we have, then we'll be able to make a valid comparator.
Yeah, just checking through, Steve?
Just to concur with Dominic and Ian. Having worked with this format with other groups, I'm very, very happy with it. And it's provided a lot of detailed information.
Lyn?
Hi there, yeah, I'm looking at it really as a newcomer to this, obviously like I said, I've worked in pensions before, seen many, many sort of risks assessments and so on and so forth. This is probably one of the easiest and the most informative that I've seen. So I'm more than happy to say that this is a good option.
Right, yeah, so, thank you Lyn. Charlotte, so I think the consensus is we would like to stick in the present format. I'm aware from reading the notes that the Investment Committee wanted a sort of a shortened summary. There's nothing for you in that you could produce a summary document for the investment fund. But I think from the views expressed, that the full details is what we require at the pension board level because that's part of our statutory remit is, it helps us to look at the detail rather than the Investment Committee. I'm not saying they don't look at the detail, but they tend to look at it at a slightly higher level than we do.
Yes, no, I would agree with that Chair. So I, so I think it's agreed that we'll carry on as is. But I will be presenting it in a more summarised version, shall we say, for the next time it goes to the Pensions Committee, which will be next September.
Right, thank you. Anyone else got anything else just to wrap that up? No, so I think we've covered the risk register. Thank you Charlotte for that. And the Funding Strategy Statement, yes, another weighty document, over to you again, Charlotte.
Yes. So the Funding Strategy Statement is one of the key documents that we are required to have in place. It sets out the policies for how the fund sets contribution rates and ensures that the employers provide sufficient contributions to meet the liabilities to pay the pensions of their employees. It's good practice to review the Funding Strategy Statement alongside undertaking the triennial actuarial evaluation. And the board will recall that we're currently going through the actuarial evaluation process at the moment. A draft version is attached and this was approved at the committee at the September meeting. So this draft will now be set out to employers and of the Pension Board for any comments that you have on the draft Funding Strategy Statement. We will be sending the draft to the employers when we send out their interim but their initial sort of evaluation results, which will probably be from the end of October onwards. So this is a board's opportunity to feedback as part of the consultation process. If you've got any comments, I will take them back to the board, sorry, not the board, the committee, sorry. And hopefully the Funding Strategy Statement will be finalised at the February committee meeting.
Has anyone got any comments or questions? No? No, oh, Dominic?
Yes, Charlotte, in view that it's now relatively public knowledge that Brunel, the fund, will be moving to the, let's call it new provider. Does that move affect anything in this document? There isn't much in here at all, if anything, in terms of the movement or the demise of Brunel. And you might argue that it doesn't really affect this document, but I was conscious there was nothing in it. And is it likely to change now we're aware we are moving to LPPI?
No, so the Funding Strategy Statement is all about, in some ways, the actuarial approaches of how we calculate, or not how we, the actuary I should say, calculates the employer contribution rates or like the approach might, or how we would deal with an exiting employer, like an admitted body closes down, how we would manage that exit. So it's all about sort of funding, if you like, and how we calculate those liabilities and employer contribution rates. So there won't be sort of any reference in there to sort of pooling or investments, if you like. It's more about the actuarial side of things.
Okay, has anyone else got anything? No, sorry Charlotte, I have got a couple of points here.
Okay.
Page 160, which of it, which goes through there, it's appendix E, which is managing the risks, it's that part of that. 160 is MacLeod and there's also devolution and government reorganisation. MacLeod, from reading elsewhere, we're looking at August 26 for payment of MacLeod. And that's not, and as it's part of the 25 valuation, I feel that should be mentioned. They're looking for that payment date.
Sorry, did I catch your point, the MacLeod, you believe there was a payment by August 26, was that?
Yes, that was reading, that was reading in the previous report, in the previous report.
I might be able to help there, Charlotte.
Yep.
The August 26 date is the date by which all potential MacLeod calculations have to be completed. It doesn't necessarily mean that there will be, you know, a large material payment paid before that date. That was the sort of extension that was provided to calculate all of the various pension types. And what I mean by that is retirement, deaths, people that have left, transfers, all the various categories of pensions have to have been calculated to see whether there is a remedy applicable or not. applicable or not. So that, I believe, is the August date that you may have seen there.
Yes. And we're not presently aware of the level of the cost of such payments.
Not specifically, no. Although I would say, tongue in cheek from an actuarial perspective, when it was announced, they said you could probably give everybody £100 and they'd all be better off. The impact so far for something like 98% of members is negligible to nonexistent. There is no uplift. It's only in, yes, it's only in very, very particular circumstances where you see it. So if you've had somebody have, you know, meteoric rise in salary in the final couple of years, that may have an impact. But for your average person within the LGBS, there is little to no difference in pension benefits at all, even if they are actually included in the cloud remedy. When you do the comparison, they are largely speaking better off as a result of the change, not worse off, other than that 2% or so that have, you know, massive swings in salary in a short period of time.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for the clarification. I just thought, I just picked it up and thought it's there. And an LGR, well, we're just, just what, when have you got a date for LGR? When things will have to happen? Charlotte, have you got a date?
I believe, I don't know, I've seen Matt Thorntons on the call, he may correct me if I'm wrong. I believe we've got to respond to government with what our plans are by the end of November, I believe. I've got nod for Matthew.
Yeah, yeah. So we've got to submit our business case by the end of November. And there's some sort of council and cabinet meetings diarised in the run-up to that. So there'll be plenty of opportunity for people to, interested parties to look at the documents. It's the next step, really, I guess, which is the uncertain part of that, Chair, in terms of how long government will take to come back to us with what their final decision and outcome of that process is. And then how smoothly anything thereafter happens.
Right. Lots of work for pensions, for us as a pensions board, sorry, and the pensions authority at that time. It's just, I've just, I've seen three different versions of what Devon could look like at the moment. Nothing's set in concrete. Okay, right. Thank you very much for that. Right. Anybody else have any questions? If not, we will move on. Investment of Pension Fund Committee, item 10. The minutes are there. Is anything we would like to raise? Anybody got any comments? No? If not, we will pass on. Internal audit update, Alexis.
Sorry, I just want to get my, there we go. Yes, thank you, Chair. Yes, so this is the kind of an update report as to where we are, sort of halfway through the year. And the board are asked to note the progress of issues audit plan and review the final reports attached, and also consider whether it wishes to make any comments in the Investment of Pension Fund Committee. So just to run through then where we are, bear with me. So at the time of writing the report, we had completed two pieces of audit work at the final report with a further four in progress, which are currently happening at the moment. And then obviously we have our schedules then for the rest of the year to deliver the rest of the plan. I don't really have anything else. I wanted to add to this, otherwise just to say, does anybody have any questions I'd like to ask?
Does anyone have any questions for Alexis? I can't see any hands. But thank you, Alexis, for the work. It's an introduction. I'm now actually getting my head around what audit does after many years. But thank you. Thank you for doing this. And quite clear as to where we're going on there. Could you identify? I just looked on page 198. The next one, so you currently got, the next one to happen is Pension Admin Strategy in quarter three. Is that quarter three of this year?
Yeah, yes. So quarter three will be between October and December, and then quarter four will be January to March.
Right. Thank you. Just clarifying. Thank you. Okay, right. So we're happy to take to note.
Well, I would say that actually, there is, I've just noticed, there is an error in the report, because I've actually, we've actually made reference to it twice in the report, one in quarter three and one in quarter four for that particular piece of audit work. So apologies, that's an error. That's actually.
Yes, it does appear twice, doesn't it? Yes.
It does. It does. I believe we're doing it in quarter, I believe we're doing it in quarter three. But my apologies for the error.
Right. Okay, right. We have, we are to note this report, I believe.
It's just to note it. And whether there's any comments for the committee? Yes.
So if you have any comments, back to the committee on this? No? Okay, I'll take it that we have noted it. We'll move on to agenda item 12. Peninsula Pensions Administrative Update and Performance Statistics. Who's presenting this one?
That'll be me.
All right. Oh, sorry. Can I ask Dominic first?
Sorry, Andrew. I don't know if we've missed one of the agenda items. There's an agenda item which is an initial update on what the actuary has said about pension contributions as part of the triannual review. And that's in the pack that I had in the post and also the online pack. If I tell you in the pack, it's page 179, right after agenda item 10.
So I think that's, I can provide context on that. So that was a presentation given to the Investment and Pension Fund Committee. So that's an attachment to those minutes. So it's not a separate item in of itself.
Okay, thank you. You stuck along the top agenda item. So I think it's been typed through. Okay, thank you.
Right. Well, thank you. Thank you for bringing that, Dominic. And thank you for clarifying. Yeah. These are quite meaty agendas to work our way through. And sometimes, thank you, things do get missed. Right. So back to item 12, Peninsula Pensions Admin Update.
Yes, thank you very much. I will summarise some of this, mindful that a lot of the wording in here is very much a standing agenda. So I'll pull out the areas of variance and take any questions, of course. But just to say that the performance against disclosure of innovation regs was flat. It was 95%, as it was previous quarter. So no material shift there, which isn't always a bad thing. 95% is a very good, a very good rate. The other stuff, before I get to the appendix, the graphs and the numbers, the other bits I'd like to call out in the report are the MacLeod update and topical given our earlier discussion, Andrew. We've, as this says, there were just shy of 4,500 individual scheme members that were identified as potentially needing some remedy work. Doesn't mean they all do. Essentially, the process for those that are new is we will look at those records, we will see the calculations that were completed. And if indeed there is service in the remedy period, so that MacLeod remedy window, we will recalculate it to ensure that it is picking up any shortfall in pension as a result of that change. Basically, the process. So we've got about 4,500 of those who do. And we are very much on track, as it says here, priority was for those that had additional monies due. So that was retirees and death cases. So those that had already received pension benefits in some form were prioritised naturally, just to make sure they weren't waiting any longer than necessary for any further monies. That's all underway, all perfectly scope. And actually, broadly across both funds, we've got, we're about 42% complete of that review. So very much on track to meet the deadline that we spoke about a bit earlier on. Nope, you're muted, Andrew.
Sorry to interrupt. On page 222, it's under power 3.7. Those additional, due additional monies being prioritised, we calculated with notification to the scheme member by 31st of August 2025. Did that happen?
Yes. So yes, it did. Yeah, absolutely. So they were the ones I just spoke about. They were retirees and the death cases that were prioritised. They are all now complete. So there was a few hundred of each. And they are, they are both now complete and green. So they've been done. There was one or two that fell just past the 31st of August, but that was because we had missing information from third parties. Actually, a couple of those, when we looked at them, there was no remedy needed anyway. So although they slightly missed it, there was in fact an impact. And the others were all calculated. So to answer that, yes, all good. The next one moving down slightly is the dashboard. This talks about being ready by the end of October. I can just say quite comfortably, we are. So we are already ready, if that's an expression. And what we're in the process of doing now is compiling some public facing website pages for our website that we can share with members or potential members that flag up on the dashboard when it ultimately goes live. Be very clear, we've got no indication at this point that it will be live with the public on the 31st of October. It's that we have to be ready and signed on by the 31st of October, which we are. I don't believe, unless something's come out in the last few days, that they've actually got a firm date for a go-live for the dashboard with the general public. But in readiness, we're doing a number of data exercises. We're cleaning up records. We're removing anybody that never had service. So we have a few hundred records from what we would call casuals, where perhaps they've joined on a casual basis with an employer, but they've never actually done any work. They've never made a claim. There's no pension contributions, anything like that. So we're clearing those up so that, again, by the end of the month, we have as clean as possible data in readiness for the go-live, whenever that might be, with a website page alongside it that explains to members what it actually means. So when they have a match or a partial match, what does that look like? And we're walking through that now. That will all be live, or technically is live, it's just hidden behind a password. But that page will be live by the end of October, so that it's good to go as well. The last point on there underneath is around the investment awards. So we've been shortlisted for innovation in administration category at the investment awards. And that's all to do with the work over the last 12 months, really, a lot of it to do with automation and process improvements, and sort of high quality service provisions. So yes, very, very pleased with that. The shortlist, and I think the awards are, excuse me, November. So we will wait and see with bated breath as to whether we are a winner.
Can I congratulate the staff for getting to that, getting to that status? It does prove, it is all down to the staff and the time and the investment that they put into place to get. And I hope they get the recognition they deserve.
Yes, thank you, most certainly. I think a couple of the staff that are involved heavily in some of the automation have been invited to the events as well and taken along. So it's, yeah, we're trying our best to recognise specific individuals that have really materially contributed. But yes, thank you. Much appreciated. If no one's got any more questions on those points, I'll just run through some of the numbers now. Good. So as I said, actually, broadly speaking, a lot of the numbers are relatively consistent and flat. So I'm not going to go line by line through the sort of 40 or 50 lines of data, but only minor variance on the previous quarter. Largely speaking, this, the middle column you're looking at there is against the regs. That's the one we're targeted against. There is also an internal, again, this is for the newer people, an internal SLA, which is the right-hand column for some of these, where we have 10 working days that we set ourselves to try and do. But the middle column is the sort of regulatory timeframe that we have to comply with. And you'll see, broadly speaking, we are sat sort of over 95% on those. In the high priority, deaths is sitting at 83% for the quarter. That one can be tricky. It depends on when we're notified, of course. We may not find out about a death until long after it happens. And therefore, collating information can take a while. And that's why that one is often a bit lower than we would like it. If I move down to the sort of medium and low priority cases, then, again, you'll see not a significant shift in most of these areas from previous quarters. Some sort of minor movements, a few percentage points here and there. The only one that stands out for me is member estimates is slightly lower, 82% here. But again, that can be any number of reasons. More often than not, MacLeod at the moment, when we're trying to estimate something, if there is any element of MacLeod, or there is a transfer in or service elsewhere, anything like that, we are heavily relying on the information from the third party. And that unfortunately can take a while. I don't know if anybody has any pensions elsewhere, but things like the NHS, for example, have stopped or certainly have done, or recently stopped providing any additional information while they got to themselves sort of sorted in-house, which inevitably means we then get delays our side. But thankfully, that is minimal. On the low priority cases, again, you'll see the ones with the most significant delay are the interfund transfers in, as where I referred to a moment ago, people transferring service from other LGBS or likewise funds. And then the frozen refunds back out again, slightly lower than we'd like them to be. But that, relatively speaking, it kind of comes up in tranches. You get waves of it. So what you tend to see is a big lump, some lump of levers go through, get a big spike in the number of refunds, takes us a bit longer to clear, but then it levels itself back out again, you know, over the course of the next quarter. Moving down with the graphs now, again, we sort of talk through these. Every time that they're broadly flat, there's nothing stand out in the last period that warrants calling out on the monthly trend analysis. The next page down has the variance in performance. This one's quite a nice one to do that like to like comparison. And you'll see the far right column, the difference. There's very little shift in most of them, other than the ones I've already called out. The next slide, so start of appendix two, the sort of bar graphs with the purple line going through it, that is a new visual. But essentially, what that's trying to show is the volume of work that we currently get on a sort of year by year basis. And what you'll notice is the blue and the red bars, which is the work created and the work completed, is quite significantly higher than it was a similar point last year. Again, without pointing fingers, MacLeod is a material part of that. For every MacLeod calculation, it is a new task that we create, and therefore it'll go through. So it's not unexpected, but it just shows the volume of work that we're getting is comparably higher. Pleasingly low, that purple line is the outstanding work. So the remaining work is actually coming down. So we're getting more in and doing more at the same time. So all in, very positive. And some of that is through the automation, things that we spoke about earlier, and then bringing some journeys online, the reasons we've been nominated, essentially, that's starting to reflect in the outputs. You'll see the next slide down, again, a different visual of the same story, really, showing the remaining works, the work outstanding, and the work remaining. It's moving in the right directions in both, in both cases. And then the last couple of graphs and numbers on here, again, just demonstrate the volume of work. So if I look at the sort of the bar graph with the line going diagonally up between the two, you'll see the volume of work is circa 9,000 more cases on a comparison of the same period, previous financial year, previous year. But the work completed likewise has gone up by about 9,000. So it's stayed relatively flat, albeit doing 9,000 more bits of work than we did in the previous year. And then the sort of, the next one or the last one, should I say, is an increase or decrease in the type of work created. So this one, you will see, anything above the line, anything red, is areas that has had increase in work. It's not saying that that number is the increase. You know, we haven't had, if I pick the MSS line, two thirds of the way to the right, we haven't had 5,500 more MSS. That's the volume. And it's just showing that it's gone up. Anything in the green is a reducing trend. Again, nothing massive to call out there. I just thought, given it's a relatively new visual, it was worth sort of pointing out. So the areas you'd expect to see, forgive me, go up, are going up. Things like amalgamations. Again, part of MacLeod is tidying up records. So we're joining records together. That's the amalgamation work being increased, as an example there. And the number of members self-service inquiries going up, again, isn't surprising, as people are hearing more about MacLeod and things like that on the news, we get more inquiries about it. So again, not unexpected increase. That was the last of the sort of graphs and tables. Were there any questions at all?
No, it's just a technical point, Gareth, which I think Fred as well. The copy I have is in black and white, rather than colour. But it might be helpful in the future if you could just put a couple of slides up for us. So because not every member, well, every member has a copy, but if we have members of the public who want to come in, it would be useful for them to have a visual for them. So if you could put it into a little presentation pack, a series, a couple of slides, that would help us, I think, greatly.
Yeah. And if there are any questions now, I'm happy to share my screen. I have the document up. So I'm happy to share the screens and go through if anybody does have any questions.
Okay. Has anyone any questions? No? No? Don't think so. No, nobody's hand up. Right. Okay. Thank you. Thank you for that, Gareth.
No bother. Thank you. No bother, thank you.
We now move on to. Item thirteen. L G P S update to Charlotte.
Thank you, Chair. So this is just to keep the board up to date with what's going on in the wider pensions world. So update on the inheritance tax issue. The board may recall that the initial. Idea of the government was that pensions administrators would be the ones to assess and pay any inheritance tax due on pensions. Thankfully, the government has seen sense and we are now just required to provide information and support the personal representative. So that's. I'm sure a welcome change in political pensions world. Also, death and service benefits have been excluded from the inheritance tax issue as well. The Pensions Commission has come back to life. Now, this Pensions Commission was first set up many moons ago. And it was them who recommended the whole auto enrolment system that we're all familiar with now of. Auto-enrolling employees every, every three, three years and they've got to opt out. So so this Pension Commission, they're going to be looking at the whole, the pension system as a whole. And be reporting back in twenty twenty seven. So we've got a little while yet to see what they come up with. Pension schemes bill, a few changes have been made as the bill progresses through Parliament, et cetera. And the big news is that the proposed removal of the power to direct pools and funds to take a specific decision about. Specific investment activity, which is one of the most contentious parts of the bill. So that's been dropped. The other issue is the Virgin Media case has also been addressed. Now, what the Virgin Media case. Refers to is where contracted out scheme. So this includes the L G P S. When you make any scheme changes, there should have been an actuarial assessment by. The fund actuary. In the L G P S case, that would have been the Government Actuary Department at the time. So every time there's been any amendments. Over the years to the L G P S, there should have been a an actuarial assessment by by GAD to say these amendments aren't affecting the contracting outside. So it looked like suddenly any changes over the last few years are sort of illegal and we could have seen the L G P S rewinding back to. Even before care days, which was quite a frightening thought. But the, in the pension schemes bill, they have added that. An allowance for retrospective actuarial input, so, which was, I think, a huge release for the whole pension industry, I think. It also looks like councillors are going to be let back in the scheme. They were allowed in the L G P S prior to two thousand and fourteen. But they've been excluded when the the scheme changes career average in April two thousand and fourteen, that the councillors were. Ceremoniously kicked out. I think there's going to be a consultation about that, I believe. And finally, there's a brief update on the pooling agenda and what's happening with the Brinell pool. And just to confirm that the Devon Fund will be joining L P P. And working with six, five other. Brinell funds. Anybody got any questions or?
Anybody got anything they wish to raise? Thank you for that clarification in respect to that. I was going to ask, because our new members, if they were aware of what the care, when the care fund came in, which you answered, which is twenty fourteen. Yes. Thank you for that. Okay, moving on to agenda item fourteen, which is our future work programme.
Yes, so this is the board's opportunity to add anything to the agenda of. Future board meetings, if there's anything they'd like officers to sort of look into or or report on, et cetera. It's always a bit of a guess as to. When things are going to fall on the agenda. For example, I'm sure the board have seen the Scheme Advisory Board Governance Review on the. On this paper for a number of years, but hopefully we're almost there on that one. So we are, we are reliant on when like the government, et cetera, report back on sort of various things. But. Yes, it is, it's a board opportunity to add anything to future. Future agendas.
Has anyone opened to the floor? Anyone got anything they would like to add or? Change? Are we relatively happy with what we've got going forward? Okay. There is that. So I'd say thank you very.
I've just had a hand up from Ian.
Sorry, Ian.
Hello, I was just wondering, could we possibly timetable in for a couple of meetings in the future? An update on the new pooling.
So that would be in February, we will know. A little bit more where things are going. In relation to pools and the negotiations as to the. Revised structure of the pool, I think we shall come out by then potentially. So, yes, so if you could keep us informed, Charlotte.
Yes, certainly.
Ever moving feast, I know.
Obviously, what I, I don't know at this point whether, how much of it will be, say confidential or not, but appropriate, we could always do a part two paper, I'm guessing.
It'd be the first time ever, but we could, yes. Yeah, but thank you for that, Ian. Yes, it is, it is a, it's a moving feast and you read the financial press, but it's. My thoughts are how it actually will operate in practice. Yeah. Thank you. Right, there's no more, no more hands raised. I'd like to thank you for your attendance and I look forward to seeing you in person on the third of February. At County Hall.